Welcome to the Easton School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty. This meeting is being held remotely by order of Governor Baker. It's on Zoom. It is also being broadcast by ECAT and Facebook Live, and it will be on ECAT this week. If you have a question that you would like to ask the committee, please type it into the Q and A and make sure that you put your name and address before you ask your question. I think that's it. Okay. Minutes, we have a bunch of minutes. Okay, first up, May twenty eighth Executive Session. Are there any comments, questions? Anybody have anything? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the Executive Committee Meetings, Executive Session Committee Meeting Minutes for Thursday, May twenty eighth? To be to not, to be accepted but not released?
So moved, Wiseman.
Second, Durant.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Next up, the Executive Session Meeting Minutes of June fourth. Any comments, corrections, questions? Someone like to make a motion?
Star, I'd make a motion to accept the Executive Set, Executive Committee Session Minutes from June fourth to be accepted but not released.
The mouthful.
All right.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
And that was to be accepted but not released. Okay. The, the School Committee Executive Session Meeting Minutes of Tuesday, June ninth. Any comments, corrections, questions? Okay. Who would like to make a motion for this one?
I will make a motion to accept the Executive Session Minutes from Tuesday, June ninth, two thousand and twenty, but not release.
Second?
O'Neil, second.
Oh, okay. All those in favor?
All right, O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. And finally, the Executive Session Meeting Minutes of Thursday, June eighteenth. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Okay, I'll make a motion to accept but not release the School Committee Executive Session Meeting Minutes of Thursday, June eighteenth.
Wiseman, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, next up, are the Easton School Committee Meeting Minutes of Thursday, November twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Okay, any comments, questions, or corrections?
My only comment is compliment to win. These were extensive.
I'll, I'll second that, Jen.
Yeah, that was, it was a lot of typing, so thank you for doing such a thorough job.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the Easton School Committee Meeting Minutes of Thursday, November twelfth, two thousand and twenty?
O'Neil, so moved. O'Neil, second.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Next up, Personnel Change Retirement. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So as you alluded to at the beginning of the meeting, we have a, an extremely significant announcement. We are very concerned, or it's, it's a bittersweet moment whenever we lose a valued colleague and a treasured employee in, in Easton. And however, this is more significant in the sense that we are losing a, a figure that has affected many, many lives in the last twenty-two years here in the district. And that is Principal Wes Paul of Oliver Ames High School. I've been trying to confirm before saying publicly, but I do believe he is the longest standing principal at Oliver Ames. And, and that, of course, is, is, is significant in and of itself, never mind the, the wonderful contributions that Mr. Paul has made to the culture, the environment, the learning in Easton, as well as the outside programming and, and his presence in the community. He, of course, is a resident and has a deep love for his students, which I know they, they all feel, and for our colleagues as well. So he does have a letter this evening. It is beautifully written. I don't know if one of you are going to read it. We did invite him to come, but he respectfully declined. He is not one for attention, but he will be getting it an awful lot before he is finished, to be sure. So we thought we would spare him of the pressure of coming this evening. But we certainly owe him a debt of gratitude for his many, many years of service at a very difficult job. It's actually quite unusual to see anyone from principal hire remain in a position for honestly more than five to ten years, depending on how high it goes. Only because of the, the significant pressures involved, the difficulty of the position, the wear and tear it takes on a person. And so we are very thankful that he has been here and that source of consistency for us for over two decades. So clearly, we are very saddened about losing him, but very, very happy for him. We know he is an avid hunter. He has, he's a grandfather now, so he has many wonderful things to occupy his time. But I, without further ado, I will let you read the letter, and then I'm sure you'll want to comment as well.
Thank you. So we, we all received the letter and have decided to share the responsibilities. Caroline, you're gonna start. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll be reading, of course. I didn't memorize my part today. Dear trusted and respected colleagues, after twenty-two years as principal at Oliver Ames High School and a tremendously rewarding career in education, I have come to the decision to retire at the end of the two thousand and twenty-one school year. My rich and varied experiences working for the students, families, faculty, and staff have kept me motivated and passionate about secondary education throughout my career. The many lifelong friendships forged in my roles along the way has been a remarkable gift that I will cherish in the years ahead.
My career began as a high school biology and chemistry teacher for eight years at Mansfield High School, where I also coached.
Excuse me, Marshfield. Marshfield High School.
Oh.
Go ahead.
It's squashed. That was why I should have done it from the letter. I'm sorry. So my career began as a high school biology and chemistry teacher for the eight years at Marshfield High School, where I also coached boys JV basketball and girls JV softball. From there, I joined the Stone High School Administrative Team as one of the Assistant Principals and learned a great deal in a four-year period about the importance of supporting teachers. In the spring of nineteen ninety-nine, I was appointed principal at Oliver Ames High School. I would not have been able to serve in this role without the incredible support, sacrifice, and love for my wife Janet and my daughters Hannah, Jocelyn, and Corinne. Time lost due to the demands of this job I hope to make up in the years to come.
I started my career as a principal here at OA prior to students having cell phones, the good old days. And the big problem was pagers. I have journeyed through six presidential elections, two NIASC accreditations, and three, and a three-year building renovation project that included welcoming grade nine students and teachers into the high school, four superintendents, five assistant superintendents, life in high school post Columbine, and many other tragic school shootings in our country, the creation of and continual adjustments to the school emergency response plans, society in schools post nine eleven, US wars in Kosovo, Afghanistan, Iraq, Libya, ISL, and Syria, the awful opioid epidemic that took far too many former students, the blessings and curses of social media, cyberbullying, concussion protocols, the expansion of the Hockamock League from nine schools to twelve, six Oliver Ames High School MIAA state championships, and countless Hockamock League championships, eight state championship banners, and three New England championships with marching band, four state gold, gold medals in jazpian, the dominance of OA Panah Show Choir, twenty-one amazing spring musicals, the countless Boston Globe Scholastic Art Awards and Congressional Art Awards, the expansion of AP courses offered at OA from three in nineteen ninety-nine to eighteen today, ratings as one of the best high schools in the state by niche, the creation of the OAHS Athletic Hall of Fame by an amazing collection of alumni and inductions of over one hundred athletes, the national crisis in social, emotional well-being of students, and the myriad of programs planned, designed, and implemented to help support struggling students, the hiring of more than a hundred and ten teachers at Oliver Ames High School over my twenty-two years, and most recently, planning and conducting a graduation in a COVID pandemic and preparing for and supporting teachers delivering a solid high school experience in a hybrid model during this same pandemic.
Throughout all of this time, the energy, passion, expertise, and excitement that our students and each of you has given has kept me energized and thrilled to be part of this amazing school culture. I am proud of all that we have accomplished, endured, and overcome in the twenty-two years I have served as principal at Oliver Ames High School. I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the retired Superintendent Dr. Bill Simmons and retired Assistant Superintendent Dr. Judy Frederick, who hired me in nineteen ninety-nine and who invested in my development as the educational leader of Oliver Ames High School. They supported my vision for Oliver Ames High School and empowered me to work with the teachers and students to strengthen and move forward as a great school. Thank you, Dr. Cabral and Chrissy Pruitt, along with the Easton School Committee for your support in these last few years of my career.
I would be remiss if I failed to thank the many OA colleagues I have worked with over my twenty-two years who helped create and sustain a culture of excellence and support within our school. OA's department heads, Mark Brockman, Jim Mitchell, Fran Ialenti, Peggy Crowley, Kathy Quealy, Bill Matthews, Lynn LeBlanc, and TJ Flanagan deserve special mention for their unwavering support, their professional abilities, and their total commitment to Oliver Ames High School. In closing, as I step away from this rewarding career, I will forever remember the gift of making connections with students and faculty. It has been a joy to support their growth and development as individuals ready to make our world a better place, and it has been a privilege to nourish a culture of excellence in this amazing school. Sincerely, Wes Paul.
Thank you, ladies. I, so I've known Wes since he came on board. I was a teacher. He also had to deal with my children, and I think we survived, and he survived, so that was good. Also, that day of kindness that happens every year with Cindy Hall, he is very instrumental in making that happen. There, we could go on and on forever, but like Leisha said, he's got a grandchild now, and he enjoys doing things in the outdoors, so we wish you the best, Wes. All right, Caroline, you're next.
Well, I actually, you know, when you're reading your paragraph, Nancy, I was thinking about the fact that I was here for all of those things myself, and I was here when Wes was appointed by, as you mentioned, Dr. Bill Simmons. I will say that I am genuinely sorry to see Doc, Mr. Paul move on. But, you know, I certainly wish him the best in the future. I feel that he has done a absolutely fantastic job managing a very difficult organization. And if a high school can't be considered a difficult organization, I don't know what can. It's just so complex. There are so many different priorities, different mandates, and, you know, such a variety of inhabitants on any given day. So I think that, you know, he is certainly to be widely praised for the effort that he put into creating what I always felt was a very upbeat, energetic, positive atmosphere, but also organized and sort of not exactly peaceful, because I, I don't think I would characterize a high school as peaceful, but in the sense that it always seemed like basically people were on the same page, the staff, the administrators, and the students, that everyone seemed pretty much, I mean, I, obviously, there are always exceptions in these situations, but I felt like there was a very positive culture that he created and maintained over the years. As I said, I could say probably a lot more, but I don't want to dominate the conversation, as I sometimes do, but I certainly wish Wes the best in the future, and I am very grateful to him for all of the dedication and energy and really, really smart decisions that he made on our behalf over the years.
Thank you. Michelle.
I just wanted to say that his amazing dedication is evident in every hall, classroom, and corner of the school, as well as every student who's flourished under his leadership and the opportunities that he's afforded them in the programming and the teachers that he's brought in under his wing into OA. And on a personal note, I want to thank him for always being accessible to myself and my students and supportive, no matter whether that was a, a good thing or a bad thing that we need to support with. But he's always there for all parents and students, and that's a wonderful, a wonderful trait, and we're gonna miss that. And correct, congratulations to him and wishing him an amazing retirement and lots of time with his family and grandchild.
Thank you. Jackie.
So I haven't had the privilege of having Mr. Paul as a principal for my child. So all of my interactions with him have really been through school committee stuff. And I've always found him to be extremely knowledgeable, patient, and very gracious. He's been very generous with his time, answering many, many questions I have had. As not having a child that's gone through high school, he's shown me around the school. He's always very proud to show people around the school and the incredible work that's being done by his teachers and staff. He makes running a high school look smooth and easy, which I imagine is not the case. He will be greatly missed, and it's gonna be very strange not to see him around. I will definitely miss him, and I wish him the best.
Thank you. Jen?
So I've had eight years of having a student at OA, and and it's been a really great experience, thanks to, to Wes's leadership. One of the, one of the things that really struck me about him, both as a parent and then enjoying the school committee, is that I think with a high school, it's really easy to get caught up in their external metrics, right, that land on, you know, top high school reports, and it's, you know, very driven on, you know, SAT scores and graduation and who's going to four-year colleges. And, and what I liked about, about OA is that there wasn't an undue emphasis on working on those external metrics. He was always very mindful of the fact that there's a broad range of capabilities, a broad range of interest, and a broad range of post-high school plans that are right for each student and worked really hard to make sure that there were course offerings for all types of students, not just the, the ones who are, you know, ready to jump into a four-year college, you know, right after they graduate high school. And, and I think that's a, a trend that's a little bit probably difficult to buck. There's a lot of external pressure, I feel like, to, to meet those metrics and to throw those numbers out there, and a lot of attention paid to that. And I always appreciated that he worked really diligently to make sure that, you know, even the students who weren't fitting into that mold still had a, a really good experience where they were leaving high school with the skills and the experience that they need to have success beyond high school. So we'll miss them.
Thank you. Caroline, go ahead.
You know, I did want to mention, Jen reminded me of this. Whenever I would go to a large event where Wes would speak to the students, one thing I noticed was how genuinely respectful they were of him, and also, really, it seemed like they had a genuine affection for him. He really managed, I think, to connect with the students. I know that that's an expectation of all high school principals. I don't think that it always happens. I think it really happened in a very powerful way with Wes. And the other thing I wanted to mention is we always talk about lifelong learners. I knew Wes from when he was first appointed, and I actually watched him grow in the role really quite dramatically. He would, he would find out about new initiatives, new educational programs, and he would come, you know, bring them into the district right away, or at least, you know, talk to the superintendent and the school committee about the possibility of, of creating some, you know, kind of innovative programming and things like that. I mean, he was always on the lookout for, you know, new beneficial programs for the students, and you could see that, you know, that lifelong learning, that mindset in process with him. Okay, I'll, I'll shut up now.
Dr. Cabral, did you want to speak, or Chrissy?
I'm sure Chrissy does. I just wanted to add that these are clearly very, very big hunting boots to fill. And we will be starting that whole process. This, tonight is not the night to talk about that, of course. This is, we want to make sure we're, we're focused on Mr. Paul here appropriately, and we will update you with that, on that information. But it's gonna be a very difficult role to fill. He has really set the bar high for his successor.
Chrissy?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to, you know, I, I look back and I think twenty-two years. That's, that's, to me, it's, it's a lifetime. And, and it is. It's like half of my life. No, but I was starting my, my teaching career when he became principal at Oliver Ames High School, and I, and I think of the impact that he, that Wes Paul has single-handedly had on this town. It's really remarkable. If you calculate, I mean, he has, he had about, he had interactions with about eight thousand kids, eight thousand kids going through that high school. And just the programming, the vision that he consistently and constantly gave, you know, I've only known him for the past four years. I can only imagine what he was like in the years prior. He was on the Hiring Committee for me, and, you know, when I, when I got the position of Assistant Superintendent, I sat down with him and talked to him about his experience in Easton. And you could act, you could absolutely see in his eyes and through his voice, his love for Oliver Ames and for this town. I've, I've, I told him that I'm gonna hold back until, you know, later in the year, but he, I'm going to miss him dearly. He's been a mentor to me here in Easton. I've learned so much about this town through him and his guidance. He's, he's a remarkable, a remarkable human being, and he will be missed greatly. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna make a motion to accept Mr. Wes Paul's resignation with regret.
Retirement.
Retirement. Do I have a second?
Also with regret, I second that.
Can we say that?
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you, everybody, and congratulations, Mr. Paul. You're gonna love retirement. All right, next District Update. Dr. Cabral.
Okay, I have several, I have several points to my update. I am reserving some things for Superintendent Update because, you know, a lot for District Update has been COVID-related, and we do have more COVID-related information. So I will start by describing a conversation with the Commissioner today. So the Commissioner has shared information that I think is really important for all of us to be aware of, especially when we're talking about context, when we're having conversations about our program right now, when we're having conversations about students returning to school or hybrid model or remote or whatnot. I think it's very important to have context, and Chrissy Pruitt and I, today in our call with him, you know, he certainly reiterated the importance of the social, emotional strain on children right now. And of course, we're, we are well aware of that ourselves, right? We have daily interaction with our kids, and we know very well where some of the issues are. There's been a huge increase in the number of emergency room visits for social, emotional crises in children as young as pre-kindergarten and kindergarten children. However, we are also still in the midst of a pandemic and the throes of a second wave that is proving to be very dangerous. And so we find ourselves really trying to balance between protecting the social, emotional wellness of our staff and students and the physical wellness of our staff and students in all reality. We are disappointed to see that our predictions about post-Thanksgiving numbers has come to fruition. We are, you know, we're exactly two weeks from Thanksgiving, and last week, we had quite a surge in town as well as higher numbers in the district. I'll get to that in a minute, but I wanted to circle back to the Commissioner's points today. He was very clear that that was a concern and wherever feasible to increase time with our students. But then he and, and Rob Curtin, his Associate Commissioner, really outlined where their concerns lay in the district. We have to remember, they're addressing three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns when they are doling their guidance. And he really made it clear that they're setting some minimum standards now, because they have a lot of concerns about the many different programs that are running throughout the state. For example, and, and I want to preface with the caveat that this has not yet been voted on by the Board of Education. This is a proposal from the Commissioner's Office to the Board of Education. But I do think it provided a context of where the advice of the Commissioner and the Governor are coming from. They are looking to set what they're calling minimum live teaching standards, and, you know, it is, they're coining this phrase "live teaching" for the first time. They have not quantified the teaching as such to, to date. We, of course, have been talking about the importance of having this interaction like we're having now in, in this Zoom call, but also in person, and that combined time really being the majority of our students' experience, whether they're remote or whether they're hybrid, having that live interaction. It has been a struggle, and it has resulted in a very challenging model for staff. It's working very well for students, but it's extremely challenging for staff, and they have sacrificed a great deal to make this work, because they know that right now it is what's best for children. We are continuing to work toward finding ways to mitigate the amount of stress and planning in particular that it puts on our educators while not reducing the experience that our students have. They're looking for two metrics going forward, and if approved by the Board of Education, that will be a minimum of thirty-five, again, what they're calling live instruction hours for every ten days of instruction. And now, the reason they did ten days is because some districts have an alternating five days on, five days off, or they have a different way of scheduling their students. We, of course, are two days in person, one fully remote, and two days streaming in to a class. We actually did an audit on our program, and we find that we have an average, and they are doing this by an average of thirty-five hours across all, because they realize there may be different models even within one district. A high school, for example, may be fully remote, while an elementary school may be fully in person. And so the average of thirty-five hours is, is what they're gonna be looking for. We find that we are at an average of forty-six We find that we are at an average of forty-six point nine hours of that interface, that time that our teachers are spent communicating directly with our students either in person or on an online platform. The second qualification is they're looking for daily check-ins every single day, a check-in with an adult. And of course, we're far, we far surpass that. So we do find that our model is not gonna need to be tweaked at all. They are sending out what they're calling a one-pager report to every district to let them know which districts need to make changes immediately. And we do not anticipate that we are under that. As, as I explained, we're actually quite above it. He did note, you know, there are some districts that are fully remote right now. That's who they're most concerned about. And then even within the model of hybrid that we're using, there are thirty percent, over thirty percent of the districts that the department has concerns about. Where they don't feel as though they're, those live teaching hours meet their minimum standard. So I don't dismiss concerns about social emotional health in any way. I could never do such a thing. That's not, that's not what we do as educators. However, we are trying to balance them with the physical health and welfare of everyone. And I thought it was important because a lot of people quote the commissioner and the governor in their urging of people returning to school or hours in school. And I just wanted to provide the context of where their concerns lie and what minimum standard they really are looking for, and that there are many districts that aren't yet there. And really, the message is for everyone to get students back in school as much as possible, surely. But as feasible, which means safely in every way. Now, you know, with that said, we certainly are dismissing the concerns and we're working on them. We have many professionals in our district beyond the administrators and teachers who whose life work is to understand when students are having difficulty both academically and emotionally and addressing that. We also have registered nurses. Every nurse in our district is a registered nurse. We have certified behaviorists. We have guidance counselors. We have psychologists, adjustment counselors. All of our adjustment counselors in the district are licensed social workers or mental health clinicians. So we certainly have resources to help parents. The key, of course, especially for students who are fully remote. But even our kids, you know, our littles and our begs that are learning remotely at this challenging time. It is very important that we work together with parents. And, and yes, we certainly are looking for probably more cooperation than any ever before from parents because we do have less in-person time with students. But we still have quite a deal, quite a great deal of contact time with students. As measured by our, that live teaching instruction time. So we really encourage anyone with concerns to reach out to students, teachers and principals and, and professionals at their buildings. But we're also very aware of educators reaching out to families as well. And asking children to, who, who they believe are at high risk or a high-need student to come back to school for four in-person days a week versus two. So we do have some space for that and we have been asking parents to, to consider having their children come four days when there is a concern from an educational professional. We have so many adults checking in with these students on a daily basis. We don't have students falling between the cracks. However, if someone hasn't been identified by a professional, certainly, parents can always reach out to the school. The schools are extremely responsive. The school is your best bet. Contacting me or Chrissy Pruitt or the school committee directly is not gonna give you the most expeditious answer because we aren't having daily interaction with your child like the school will be. So we do encourage that. We feel as though we can get our kids, every one of our children through this crisis. This is a terrible crisis, the likes of which we hope none of these children will ever experience again in their lifetime. This is not dramatic. This is, I'm not being dramatic. This is literally something none of us on this call have experienced in our lifetime, and we hope none of our children ever will again. It is going to be extraordinary, and it is going to take extraordinary measures. And it is going to take a toll. But we are going to be here to support everyone, our students and our staff, and get them through the crisis and help them for years afterwards. We will always know what we've been through together. And we will always be keeping track of students' growth, their potential, and how we can move them forward. I know most people don't have experience in education for decades and decades, but for those of us that have you know, my thirty years of education, I have to say, I, I, while I've never experienced something like this, I have had many, many students sadly, who have been out of school for months or years at a time for cancer treatment, for significant surgeries, open-heart surgery, brain tumors. They've been out for social emotional crises. And we have always gotten them back on track. This is different where every single one of our kiddos is going through this together. And the system itself is being restructured to address these really significant challenges. Unlike when one child, for example, is out of school for an extended period of time. And it's just their experience. It's not a shared experience with others. In that way, this is even a better support system. Because we're all experiencing this at the same time. You know, one of my very best friends from high school missed our entire senior year. She learned virtually, virtually with tutors at the time. We didn't have Zoom for sure. She had non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. It was, it was traumatic for all of us who were close to her, but certainly she missed most of her senior year. Her experience actually gave her the desire to pursue medicine as her career. She's a registered nurse now who is saving the lives of COVID patients, literally as we speak. It isn't a sentence for our kids to be enduring this. As a parent, I know I have been heartbroken thinking what does X situation mean for my child ten, twenty, thirty years from now? So as a parent, of course, I understand that anxiety. But we have a huge, huge safety net here. We are all fine-tuned into what is happening with our children. We are dedicated to keeping them safe physically and socially emotionally. And we're not letting either one of those fall by the wayside. So I, I want to encourage people to stay engaged. I don't want anyone to think we aren't thinking of either one of those as a priority. We absolutely are, as well as the education the children are receiving, which I will personally endorse as being one of the best in this Commonwealth right now, which by definition makes it one of the best in the country and the world, frankly. Because of our level of education here. So I would share that again, even though that minimum standard is unofficial at this point. We, we blow it away. Not based on any rule that was given to us, but only based on our knowledge of what we know is best for children. And what our educators have, have dedicated themselves to for this entire school year. So I would ask that, you know, we, we continue to work together. We know what resources are available to us. We take advantage of them. And we continue to support each other through this, this really traumatic time. But we will get through it. And we will continue to monitor what's happening. We are not in a position right now to have full in-person learning. We are holding firm to our recommendation of six-foot social distancing for now. Again, we continue to monitor that. While we didn't know where we would be right now in December, back in August, we did know that it would be mercurial. We did know that it would be completely guided by the virus and its trajectory. And it is. And so we actually have not veered from our plan at all. We still remain in the same, same phase. And this, in the next phase remains at three-foot social distancing. It doesn't mean we won't consider something different if we have a different scenario in our country or in our region. But we're very proud of where we're at right now. We're very proud of our educators. We're very proud of our parents for assisting us and modeling for their children. The resilience and the grit that it takes to get through something unusual and helping them understand that we can get any, we can always get through everything together. We love them, we support them, and we will help them to adjust. Before I go on to start talking about some numbers in the district, are there any questions about the information that we've shared?
Nancy?
Caroline, go ahead.
I, I just have a quick comment. I, I know that there was a, a survey that was conducted by Mass Inc. about parent satisfaction with different models. And the hybrid model was the one that many people had the concerns about. Thirty-one percent of parents had concerns about the hybrid model. However, what was interesting is the main complaint that was made about the hybrid model was the enormous amount of asynchronous learning, which was from, for their purposes, independent learning or independent, yes, learning, that usually went along with hybrid models. That is, as you've pointed out several different ways, not the case in Easton. We have much more synchronous, synchronous learning going on within the hybrid, hybrid model that we have. So I, I do think that, you know, it makes perfect sense what you said about what the commissioner is proposing. Because I, I think that, you know, you've, you've made very clear that one of the things that we are really proud of about the model that we have is that we have much more face-to-face interaction. It may not be occurring inside a school building, but it's the interaction that's key. I don't think it's really the location nearly as much as it is just the simple fact of that interacting with one's teachers and classmates. So I think that, as I said, that survey essentially legitimizes the approach that you took. Because as I said, the main problem really has been the asynchronous learning. In terms of parent satisfaction, anyway.
Thank you, Caroline. Any other questions? I don't, I don't see any, Dr. Cabral, so you may continue.
Thank you. So today we posted, as I do every Wednesday, I usually do it a little later in the evening because things happen even on Wednesdays, the cases that we have in the Easton Public Schools. Now that we've been doing this for a few weeks, I think it's very important to clarify how things are being reported out. I did explain this before we started posting on our district website. And I did explain this when Desi started reporting figures. However, we find that until people see what something is, they may not have a context to understand what the definition is of, of what we're looking for and why we're using specific data. What I mean by that is, for those of us that use data frequently, for anyone in the audience that is, is used to statistics or data, a very core concept is that the data needs to be used for its intended purpose. Otherwise, it's completely invalid. The collection of information from Desi is defined as any student or staff member who has been in a school in the last seven days. The purpose of that is to try to keep track of school spread. That's the purpose. It's not to determine how many cases are in a district or how many cases are in a town. Or whether students get COVID, or whether children contract COVID. And that's a very different set of data points that we would use for that. And I'm gonna try to explain why that's the case. So for example, on the Desi website, well, before I explain this, I just want to note that in our reporting last week, I reported four cases to Desi, and Desi reported out two cases. Mrs. Pruitt contacted them. They acknowledged that it was their error. We asked them to fix that on their website. Unfortunately, for any of you that have checked that website, it is a PDF sheet that they put out with every district in the Commonwealth once a week. And so they don't print corrections. However, they did acknowledge it was their error, and they said that anyone who had concerns about that could contact Desi directly, and they will clarify that it was their error, and they will validate the number on our Easton Public Schools website. So that's, that's first. Second, I want to explain that when we first talked in open meeting here about putting our data on the Easton Public Schools website, we decided to define it the same way that Desi did. Because we knew that we would be referring to that. Many of our parents and staff would be referring to that. And we didn't want to have two different data points that would be confusing for people. And so we put Desi's definition right at the top of our chart. And if anyone goes on the Easton Public Schools website under COVID cases in Easton, they will see the chart I'm talking about. They will see the definition. It's been the same since we put it up, which says any student who has been in school for the last seven days. Again, because they're considering that time to be a time where others could perhaps have been infected. What it doesn't include are, for example, remote students. A remote student who hasn't stepped foot in a building since September first wouldn't be collected in that data. Because they are not a risk to the rest of the student body or to staff. We also have found, which of course we couldn't have predicted, but we've also found that there have been several cases, particularly in Easton, where the spread has been rampant in families. Now, what that means in terms of quarantines and isolation is that it is conceivable that a family of five or six people could have one person in the family become positive. That then means that the rest of the family was put on a fourteen-day quarantine. Halfway through that quarantine, or even toward the end, if another family member becomes positive, that student's quarantine begins again. Five, eight, ten days later, if someone else becomes positive, the quarantine begins again. And then ultimately, if the student themselves becomes positive, they themselves then have to serve time in their house in an isolation. So we have had students who have literally been out of the building for a month for no other reason than health precautions to protect them and others based on the guidance from the CDC and the Department of Public Health. Well, when that's the case, if a student's been out of school for fifteen, twenty, twenty-five days, there's no way obviously that they could have affected, infected anyone in the school building. And so Desi doesn't report them. We consider it factual information because it is. Because the point of the data is to see if there's school spread. And as of today, we have fifteen cases listed on the, on our website of people who have been in the building within the last seven days. Contact tracing has been done whenever they have been within six feet of anyone for more than fifteen minutes. And up to today, not one person who was identified as a close contact And up to today, not one person who was identified as a close contact to a positive person in a school building has then become positive. What that shows us is that our safety standards are working. Our six-foot social distancing, our messaging to students and staff, our disinfecting, cleaning, masking, hand washing, all of it combined, has created the safe environment we've promised everyone. However, when people look at the data to try to determine other things like do children get COVID, that becomes invalid data. And I'll explain what I mean. If we add all of the cases in the Eastern Public Schools since the first of September, our website says fifteen because we're capturing who's been in within the last seven days. However, up to today, we have had thirty students and six staff members for a total of thirty-six people in the Eastern Public Schools. What happens, however, is these people contract the the virus outside of school. We had several of these Thanksgiving. So for example, Thanksgiving was November twenty-sixth. If someone was with a family member who found out they were positive the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth, if that student is in cohort B, they would not physically be back in the building until December third. So they had never been in contact with someone in school, but they find out they're a close contact or they find out they're positive and they stay home. That's not a risk to the school community, so we don't report that because that's the definition Desi uses. But I think it's important for people to know that we have had thirty-six cases. In addition, the Board of Health in Easton keeps track of all age groups. There are students who either don't go to the Eastern Public Schools, they go to private schools, or they are pre preschool age, an infant or two years old, or they're not in a pre-K or K program. And so even though we've had thirty-six cases, in the town of Easton between September first and December third, there have been fifty-five positive cases of children ages eighteen and under in Easton. Again, I'm trying to provide context because many have inferred that students do not spread this disease. Clearly, they are spreading it in their own families. We also have evidence that they're spreading it at activities and at social gatherings. But because it's outside of school, Desi doesn't capture that information. The reason we don't have spread in school is not because it doesn't spread from child to child or adult to child or child to adult. The reason we don't have spread is because of the protocols we currently have in place. Now, to put it into further context, fifty-five cases since September first represents twenty percent of the cases in Easton. So it's significant. In fact, other than the nineteen to twenty-nine age group, which has sixty-eight cases, it is higher than every other age group in the town. In fact, if we combine the last four age groups, which is ages sixty to ninety plus, there have been more cases eighteen and under at fifty-five than the forty-seven cases we've had in adults sixty and up. And it's higher than any other category. Ages thirty to thirty-nine has had thirty-six cases. Forty to forty-nine has had thirty-five cases. And fifty to fifty-nine has had forty cases. Now, this is public information. This is not school information, but this is part of the host of metrics we use when we make our decisions. We describe what metrics we would be using. We explain to people where they could get them themselves. And we have been utilizing them to make our decisions going forward. I also wanna note that we are particularly concerned about the break that is upcoming for the winter. And that is because we were using the data from Thanksgiving as a predictive factor in how people would be interacting with one another, whether they would be traveling, whether they would get together in groups. We discourage it, of course. We're not passing judgment, but s- just merely sharing the statistics. Out of the thirty-six cases that have developed since September, eighteen of them have developed since Thanksgiving. We have had eighteen cases develop since November twenty-sixth, two weeks tomorrow. We can't deny that that is a direct result of the holiday, of an extended weekend and of the travel that we know took place. We are also very aware that many more people travel and get together with extended family, friends, neighbors, and so forth during the winter break than even during Thanksgiving. So we are extremely concerned. And for those reasons and many more, we are not considering changing our safety protocol in terms of physical distancing or our model to uh at this point. Does anyone have any questions about those statistics? The uh last two items that have to do with updates, one is that we do have new CDC standards for quarantines. We are aware of it. However, the Department of Education has not yet sent out their guidance. The commissioner told us today that it is forthcoming. It is not yet on our website or uh in our playbook for that reason. We cannot put it there until the Department of Education makes it um official. And the Department of um Public Health has not either. It is merely a a federal guideline right now from the CDC. However, the school nurses, the Board of Health, Mrs. Pruitt and myself, we are all aware of the guidelines and we will be able to counsel people appropriately when individual cases arise. And finally, we did put out our survey for remote learners returning. Uh again, there has been a lot of discussion about what we would do, but I would draw your attention to our original plan in August, which said that if student um interest was to move from remote to hybrid, if they let us know by December thirteenth that they could begin in January. We are maintaining that. We did send out a survey. It is due December thirteenth. The only adjustment we've made, and I think the data that I've just shared hopefully will validate this adjustment, is that we will start these students instead of on January fourth, we will start them on January nineteenth, which is the day after the Martin Luther King Day holiday. That gives two weeks for us to come back from winter break and not infuse more students into an environment which we are really trying to maintain at a very high level of safety. And so we think it is wise to wait the two weeks. That is the only adjustment we've made in that plan. We, of course, don't have the final numbers on that because it isn't due until the thirteenth. We encourage everyone to complete it if they haven't yet. The thirteenth is Sunday, so please keep that in mind if you have a remote student. We only sent it to remote students because if a student is currently hybrid, they can move to remote at any time. They can't return until the next window, of course, but they can return, uh but they can move to remote at any time. It is only remote parents who receive the survey. As with the last survey, it went only to the first contact so that we wouldn't have repeat responses per family skewing our data. So if you did not receive one, please check with the um co-parent or co-guardian of your child. It's possible it went to that email if you have that listed first in our system. We have three hundred and sixty-two responses as of today out of six hundred and five remote learners. Now, obviously, people that do not respond will remain remote, though we would like to hear from everyone because we don't, we do wanna make sure that everyone received the information and is able to respond. So simply responding, no, I want my child to stay remote is very helpful to us. Thirty-two point six percent or one hundred and eighteen students, not families, but children and young adults have indicated the desire to move back to remote. Two hundred and forty-four students.
Hybrid, sorry.
Back to hybrid. Thank you. Two hundred and forty-four students have expressed an interest in staying fully remote. That represents just over sixty-seven percent of the respondents. And fifty-eight have requested transportation via a bus or a van that would be prescribed on an IEP. Now, obviously, the survey's not closed yet. And obviously, we have not disaggregated that data yet to see exactly who these students are, what classrooms they're in, what cohort, how many students are in each class. But based on just the numbers, the to- in totality, we feel comfortable that we will be able to accommodate all requests. There may be rare incidents where we'll have to look and perhaps um a student will not be placed in the cohort of their last name. They might be in cohort A and perhaps they anticipated they'd be in B or vice versa. We're gonna put them, of course, where they fit and where it makes most sense in terms of the number of people in the class. There may be rare occasions where, as I've said many times before, we may need to ask staff members whose children are attending both cohorts to restrict their child to one cohort or the other. Um again, that we think that's going to be a rare occasion. But certainly statistically, it could happen, so we have to take a look at that. What we're not gonna do is uh make a blanket pullback of the offer of the children of staff members being in both cohorts. We need our staff members in the building. There's a great shortage of substitutes. We have a great, I mean, the numbers I shared were people who are positive. I can't even quantify the number of staff and students that have been out of school because they are a close contact or they're symptomatic or they're awaiting tests. Hundreds. Um and so we need to keep as many of our healthy staff in the building as possible. Unless there are any questions, those are all the updates I have for district up- updates that are COVID or program related. I have some other items that I will save for superintendent notes.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, so thank you, Dr. Cabral. That was um informative. So we'll go to a public comment. Chrissy, do we have any um anything in the question and answer?
We only have one at this time. It's from Beth Gaylor, Nine Days Street. I wanna thank you all for the time and energy you've spent and continue to spend doing what is best for all students in the Eastern Public Schools. I know there are parents who would like their students to be in person more hours per week, but there are many of us, especially given the current spike in the pandemic, who would absolutely not be comfortable with lessening our current level of precautions. For example, going from the current six-feet distance between students to three feet. I know you all have the health and well-being of our students as your primary objective and I think I speak for many parents in my appreciation for your efforts and for holding firm with the current procedures.
Thank you, Ms. Gaylor.
All right, thank you. Um and that was it on public comment, right? So now, Dr. Cabral, you can do your second part. Sorry. Uh superintendent notes.
No, I'm sorry. I'll try to be quicker. I just wanted to note that in your packets, you received the MIAA guidance for ice hockey. When Bill Matthews, the athletic director, presented to you, that had not yet been released by the MIAA, he will be following that to the letter. If you have any questions or concerns, please let me know and I will uh communicate directly with him and uh make sure that any concerns you have are addressed immediately. Second, I wanted to just note that the Blanche Ames Project is still going strong. Despite the time we are investing uh in in the aforementioned items, we are uh to looking at uh contractors right now, which is surreal to me, anyway, um having been involved with it for so long. Um we did have our members of our school planning committee review the number of general contractor and subcontractor bids. We've been told, of course, I wouldn't know otherwise, but we've been told by our design team and our um project managers that we have a an extremely healthy number of bidders, which is great news for a project of of this scale. Um it it's a sign of the times, I believe, but also it's a sign of the um the attraction of creating spaces in Easton. Um with the architecture and the landscape of Easton, um we we were assured we probably would have many people um interested. And just as just as we had many designers and project managers interested, we also had an extremely healthy group of um contractors. They are working on that process. Um it gets narrowed down uh and presented to the 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 school planning committee proper. So I am not actually privy to who they are just yet. The the subcommittee is working on that and I thank them very much. They've spent many, many hours going through the thousands of documents that are submitted when a contractor or a subcontractor puts forward a proposal for a project. So that's going well. I also wanna add that, you know, traffic has always been a concern on the campus. And we did say that we had asked the design team to really look at the traffic flow of Parkview, but also the the greater campus area. And we were hopeful it would relieve some of our other issues when we were working on the project. And I will say that we've most recently had a meeting that uh included the middle school parking lot. So because there will now be an access road that goes uh south to north from Lothrup all the way up to Columbus, we uh were able to meet with the design team and um there were some safety considerations where Parkview traffic would would come into that access road. And so they softened those curves a little bit, but then it turned out that they were all coming out at the head of Columbus Street and the Eastern Middle School Parking Lot, which created another safety concern. Well, because of that, we're able, because it's a safety concern brought about by the park, sorry, not Parkview Project, the Blanche Ames Project. Because of that, it allows us to loop the middle school parking lot, the head of the parking lot into this project. Still under budget. So we're still under budget, still planning to be on time. But it does allow for um a smoother traffic flow into the Eastern Middle School Parking Lot. So it makes the, excuse me, it makes the egress from the Blanche Ames School safer up to Columbus as one of the egress routes. There will be three out of that school. But it also is going to make um easier an easier exit for people leaving the middle school instead of going through basically Spooner Street, which is kind of basically going through the current Parkview campus. Now it will be an actual access road. They can exit out to the south to go out Spooner Street or to go down to Lothrup or to go Or to go down to Lothrup or to go straight back up to Columbus within much more, a a much safer intersection there. So we're, we're excited about that. I don't real, I don't have any drawings to share. But I did just wanna note that, you know, our desire to have the larger campus footprint. Um remediated by this project is actually coming to fruition. Um it very um concretely, no pun intended, with the the paving and the the new parking lot of the Eastern Middle School. So we're, we were very pleased about that. Then I would um, I would like to say that I uh. Feel very honored to have been chosen by the Mass Association of School Committees. To be an at-large member of a new standing committee they have. It's called the Equity Diverse Diversity and Inclusion. Committee. Um it is a statewide committee. And we will be working in conjunction with a planning committee to bring about some of the. Very salient, timely conversations we've been having in Easton, but at a state level. And so, you know, we're, we're very encouraged that our professional organization has committed itself. To the work that Easton has committed itself to in the last several years. We hope to leverage what we've been able to do. Um and learn from our colleagues, what they've been able to do. And really funnel our efforts to make some very transformative change in the Commonwealth. And I'm very excited. Uh to have been chosen. Um I feel honored to to be on that committee. As I said. We will be meeting regularly. We had our first meeting uh in on November twenty-third. It was extremely dynamic and exciting. We have a lot of work to do, a great deal of work to do. But now I I feel as though we have created this network where I will be able to. Um learn from and share and and um communicate with my colleagues. In a statewide effort to bring about this very important change. Um that I hope to see happening a lot, a lot with a, with much higher quality. And with a a much quicker timeline now that we're able to to combine our efforts. Um so I will be reporting out to you regularly about the work that we're doing. And then uh finally, there was a sheet, it might seem very random, in your packets. We have um, we have been aware, but you know, there's kind of been a few things going on and so it sort of fell off the radar. That the the state's effort to increase minimum wage. Is done with a seventy-five cent increase every January first. And so currently, minimum wage is thirteen dollars. Uh no, I'm sorry, it's twelve dollars and fifty cents. And it is increasing to thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents in January. We currently, our, our. Our most minimum wage workers earn thirteen dollars an hour. So right now, we're fifty cents over minimum wage. However, come January, we will be twenty-five cents under. So we did have this conversation once before, actually in two thousand nineteen, we increased it. Um we, we found what we thought was sort of a policy issue because we had listed in in the school committee policy book. What we were, what our wage was for substitute teachers specifically. We found that to be problematic because anytime, as as you're all aware, when you make a school committee policy change. There are very specific parameters. You have to have a first reading, you have to have a second reading, you have to have a vote. And it can take months, literally, between meetings to get something like that changed. So we did take that out. I don't know if you remember, we took that out, uh what the wage would be. Uh but as a point of information, we wanted to share with you. This um effort on the part of of the Commonwealth is scheduled to end um with. The uh goal of fifteen dollars. And so for the next three years, they're adding seventy-five cents until they achieve fifteen dollar minimum wage. And so I've presented you with a chart of all of our hourly and uh non-union hourly. And substitute positions, substitute custodians, paras, teachers, nurses, and so forth. What they currently make and what we would propose. We also would increase seventy-five cents so that we would remain twenty-five cents above minimum wage each time. And we would make that change every January first for the next three years as the state will do. We are in tough financial times, to be sure. However, as I stated earlier, we are in a dire need for qualified substitutes. For many of our staff members in every position. Not only are we competing right now with our education peers and colleagues across the state. But really, anyone that hires minimum wage employees. Uh retail stores, supermarkets, pharmacies, warehouses. Anyone that offers minimum wage is really a competitor for our workforce. And so uh for that reason, we are uh recommending. That we uh increase the minimum wage as you see in your chart. Um and again, just for broad purposes, it's seventy-five cents for each position in each of the three years. Um so that we will not be behind minimum wage and that will take us through. But as I said, to the next three years. And then, of course, we can revisit what the state legislature chooses to do with minimum wage at that time. So um I did put that in for a a point of information for you. Uh because it's not in the policy, you, you don't have to vote on it. But it does involve wages and so I didn't know if you wanted to vote on it. I will tell you that our next meeting is January fourteenth and we do hope to make these changes for January fourth. So if you do, if you did want to vote on it, I would request a school committee meeting, brief, al- albeit brief. Before January fourth, just so that we can make that wage adjustment for the fourth. Um otherwise, we will go ahead and do that, but I'm looking for your guidance on how you'd like to proceed.
Okay, does anyone um have, wanna comment on this? Okay, um I think it's a good idea and we did get this um paper. Uh we do have a meeting Monday that was supposed to start at six, but is going to begin at six thirty. So if you'd like, I don't know if it's too, no, it's only Wednesday, so it's time. So we could meet um Monday at six o'clock before the uh meeting that we have with uh the town.
Yes, we have, we have a a meeting scheduled. It could even be six fifteen unless you feel as though there will be significant discussion, which is fine. We can start at six. We have an executive session then at six thirty with the town. So we, you could always convene at six. And then uh go into recess and executive sess- session at six thirty, absolutely.
Okay, does, it, does anyone have any thoughts, disagreements, agreements? Everybody okay? Thumbs up? Yeah. Okay, so why don't Lynn, uh why don't we make that meeting from Monday at six, followed by the executive session with the town?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, and you were talking about that traffic thing over it. At the, at the new Blanche Ames School, I was kind of waiting to hear you say you were gonna fix the traffic problem at Olmstead Richardson, but. Maybe that will happen too, we'll see.
No, we are hoping that is the case because um we are. We're giving multiple acts, we're giving multiple egress points to the middle school and to the Blanche Ames School, which they don't have right now. And so we do believe it's going to ease the traffic patterns for the rest of the, rest of the schools.
Okay, thank you. All right, um Assistant Superintendent Notes, Chrissy.
I just have a couple of things for you this evening. The first is to update you on, um the commissioner has just come out and stated that. The MCAS is, is indeed getting pushed back for our high school students. Um originally, they were scheduled to take the MCAS assessment, our juniors or or the typical. Um students of in grade eleven. Um February, January through February, and that is getting pushed back until later this year. We do not have further guidance on that yet. Um they are looking at that. The seniors for their last chance. Um and in, in um, in Easton, we have um less than a handful. Uh will be taking the MCAS for their high school determination. On their uh in the January, February um timeframe. So just wanted to let you. In on that if you hadn't heard already. Um the access test, which is also for our English language learners. Typically, that assessment is given also in the January to February window. It has been expanded, thankfully. Um until May twentieth. So we will have a longer period of time to provide that assessment for our English language, language learners. To measure their progress. Are there any questions on that?
Yes, when you said um the MCAS for the high school kids, are you talking the regular one that the juniors this year? Current juniors did not take last year.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and the commissioner did speak today that they are looking into something similar to what happened last year. As um potentially looking at a competency determination for our science MCAS. So because they may not have the window, which would entail ensuring that they have um. Si- been successful in a science course that is equivalent to um preparation for the MCAS. So we're, we're, we'll be receiving more information on that and as soon as we do, I will let you know. Um but the high school administrators are are right on board, understanding um what that means for the testing schedule. Um and they had everything prepared, so kudos to the high school administrative team for having that all prepared for a January testing date. Um but now that will get pushed back. And thankfully, due to the one-to-one initiative that we um had. We sh- we don't foresee the, the, if, if we do have a condensed period with. More grades having to test, we don't foresee it being an issue because of the devices that we will have within the district.
Okay, so I have a question. If you're talking about, to me, this makes no sense, I'm sorry. You wanna give MCAS to, the state wants to give MCAS tests to kids. That have been out of school since March, basically, and. Determined that they're gonna graduate, this is part of their graduation. Was there any talk, do you know? If there was any talk by Desi of just foregoing MCAS for like another year? I, I.
Yeah, in, in order to do that, part of, no, I, I, Nancy, I completely agree with you. Um it's, it is unfortunately part of a federal law. And in order to do that, they have to get, um we have to, we have to get um. Uh um excused at the federal level. And then there's, it's a two-step process because then the commissioner needs to go to um the, the state. And ask for um an excuse from them as well. So we need, we need approval in two forms. One at the federal level and one at the state level. Um I know that they are waiting to hear what the Biden administration will do in reference to this. We knew that if um Trump remained in office, his administration. Absolutely had said that there will be no changes to the state mandated assessments. That go with the, with um, with the, the, that, that are planned. But now that Biden um's administration is coming in, we are waiting to see if there will be a change in that or any, or any waivers.
Well, if people wanna get up in arms, this would be the time to contact your senators and your politicians and. Because there's no way in the middle of a pandemic that we should be testing these little kids. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yep, I, I agree with you, just, just, just to note. Um the other thing I just wanna share is speaking about assessing children during a pandemic. We do have report cards coming out at the elementary level, um the middle school as well. But I just want to really, um uh, well, we did change the schedule a little bit for our first and second grade. They are now going on the same schedule this year only as our kindergarten schedule. So report cards for them will be coming out. Um at the end of January, beginning of February. They will be receiving only two report cards where our three through five, three through eight students will continue to receive the three report cards. And I just wanted to note that, you know, I've been receiving emails from, from many of our wonderful educators. Stating how difficult it is to actually assess our kids at this time. If I can remind everyone that back in September, we put a strong emphasis. And spoke with our staff and our administrators, our leaders in the district also. Shared with their staff the big focus on our social emotional well-being of our kids. And that was a big focus on, on the way that we started the school year. There are instances, we did implement for the first time in many years, an NA feature. For the report card, meaning not applicable, because there are things that have not been touched upon. But I wanna remind everyone that this is a K to twelve spiral, spy, the, the standard spiral. And so if it hadn't been touched upon, it doesn't mean that it will not get addressed and it will. Um you know, as Dr. Cabral had stated before, we are, we are, we know that we will be able to catch our students up. Um we actually are finding that, that many of our students are in pretty good shape. Uh through our pre- preliminary assessment data that we, that we have administered um at the elementary level. So I just wanted to let parents know, please, don't weigh heavily on these report cards this time. You know, we did talk about, um, I did talk to some staff members about the importance of a- the actual interactions with parents or families during. Conferences, because that's where more of the information will be shared. Um whatever letter or number your child gets on the report card is not the end-all, be-all. Um it's, it's really been difficult to assess, especially when our students have been remote for some time. So you know, even while they're in school, they're doing assessment, they might be doing an assessment. But while they're home, it's more difficult to do that. So they, we haven't been able to gather as much information as, as we have been in the past. Um so I just wanted to share that about, about report cards. Yes, Jen?
Can you talk a little bit about, um, so I know the, I know high school grades have closed. Um and I think they were due in, might have been today or last week. And there's, there was an article in, I don't know, it might have been the Globe or New York Times about um. About how school districts are reporting, they're seeing a much, you know, a big increase in students who are failing classes or have really low grades. And I know, you know, for high school, unfortunately, there's not a lot of wiggle room to. There's not a lot of grace, right, with the grades. So he can do a lot, there's a lot of grace you can put in with the younger kids, but. These guys still are working on cumulative GPAs and college applications and, you know, all of that. So just what are you, what are we seeing here? What are any thoughts on kind of trends and, you know, any, any words to calm down parents? Who are watching their kids' GPAs, you know, tank over like a second semester in a row. Um coupled with last year's end of year train wreck too.
Yeah, I think, I think that this is where we've talked about the importance of our partnership between our families and our, and our schools. And, you know, I, I know, for example, myself, I have a tenth grader. And I'm constantly monitoring his work because when he is, when he is ho- when he is home, he is distracted. And it's much more difficult for him to get his work done. Um so, so we are seeing more, more income, you know, uh work that is incomplete than in the past. Um I know that the, the, our, our teachers at the high school are constantly. Um, you know, talking with the kids about it and, and reminding them to send, to send things in. But this is also where we need the parents to really be, the families to be observing as well. And noting what their child is handing in and what they are not handing in. And if they're seeing a pattern, please reach out to the teachers um so that they can assist in, in the completion of it. But I did read that article also, uh it was in the New York Times and it definitely is a concern throughout the country. Um and I think it was on, it was on um Sixty Minutes or something as well. Um but yeah, it's, it's definitely a concern. We are seeing a higher rate, but it's not a major um turn at this point.
For in terms, and in terms of, of context, as we've talked about before, i- it is not just grades, right? What are the things that we are constantly told are very important to um college recruiters or campus admissions counselors? And it's not just grades, it's, it's participation in um sporting events. Or clubs and activities or the part-time job that they just don't have right now. Um however, as I said before, this is not, our students are not in isolation. It's not like they're competing against students who are participating in all of these events. And are not having a disruption to their school experience. Um everyone is in the same predicament. And so we're gonna see this trend kind of move and believe me, every college admissions officer is well aware. Of what students are going through. And, you know, this is not only unusual for us, it's unusual for them as well. And how a student performs during a pandemic, when they may be learning only remotely, is not a, a, a. A significant indicator of their success in college or university. Everyone's very well aware of it. So again, I I just wanna make sure we put it in context. You know, we've endured many awful experiences, I gave medical examples, but. You know, s- entire schools have been shut down for earthquakes or or Katrina or many, many other events where. It was much more of a concern because it was way more. Really across the world, right? So the entire world is um is experiencing the same thing. So if everybody was competing at this level, and there's a dip in Easton, the rest of the world's right there with us.
Right.
And then they're here, and then they're, so we really need to just remember the context of that, and because. There's enough going on without having, and and I would argue in past years, I did have some. Modest disagreement with how some parents viewed certain indicators of progress. Uh if I can put it that way, um you know, we we have, it's all about growth. When you're an educator, it's all about growth. And what a student is learning and not how they, you know, competed with someone else. They're gonna land where they're supposed to land, that is a good fit for them. And this is no different, and so people just need to remember that we're in the same situation that everyone else is in. And whatever trends we're, they're gonna see with their own child are the same trends that every American and every citizen of this world really is going through as well. It's just important to keep that context in mind.
And as far as assessments also, it's really been pretty remarkable being a part of some of the conversations that. Our high school staff and actually all of our staff are having around assessments. Because we are challenged with assessing students in environments where they might, they might, may be able to look answers up. And how do we know that it's an authentic assessment? And are we adapting to this where we're doing, where we're actually having them demonstrate more? Rather than recall. And you know, I'll I'll never forget, and I I I apologize, I share so many stories about my own children, but that's my background. That's, you know, my my set of knowledge where, you know, my son was answering a question and he leans back and he goes, hey Alexa, what's the importance of? And Alexa goes, the importance of the French Revolution was da-da-da-da-da-da, and he sat there, he's like, thanks Alexa. And I thought to myself, oh my goodness, this is the world we're in right now, right? This is, this is where we need to adapt. And I I know that the educators in Easton are are really mindful of that and seeing that and are aware. And are really changing the way that they're assessing our kids. So that that, I think that's going to be a positive change coming from all of this um in the end. Um, and I'm sorry, anything else about that?
No.
Oh Caroline hasn't.
Okay.
Since we're on assessments, uh I just have a couple of things. First of all, that that Alexa example is great because I can remember even a couple of decades ago. Um, some of the best teachers my children had talked about. It wasn't memorization that was important, it was knowing where to find the information. So now we have Alexa, I think that's pretty cool. Anyway, but uh I do have a question about the MCAS, and I apologize, I should probably know this, but is the. Doesn't the score that's passing change year to year or not? Is there, is this, is this a sort of a curve process built in? I mean, I I, that's what I thought. So so in essence, even though kids may score lower.
Dramatically, but slightly.
Okay, I mean, I I do know that there's the whole growth indicator.
Right.
Part of it that's probably more critical, but um, you know, as as Alicia mentioned, in context. Every student in in Massachusetts very nearly is having the same. Difficulties, challenges facing those this year, but. I would also think that even if the federal government and the state don't give individual districts permission to forego. The MCAS, that there would have to be some sort of consideration in terms of a. Like I said, a sort of a curve process. I mean, there's always a quite a small percentage each year of students who who don't pass. In the past, they've had other opportunities that they won't have now, taking it as seniors. But um, but I I'm hoping that at least there, as you said, in terms of grace, I mean, that even on the MCAS level. One would think that you couldn't, as you know, apply the same standards that were there in the past.
Right, that's a great point. You're absolutely right.
To note is when the next generation um. Administrators did, actually, we're we're just reporting on the current data because we couldn't compare it. And you know, I'm anticipating that happening again with having a gap year of taking the assessment, and um who knows what's gonna happen this year. So just also to clarify for MCAS, um three through eight, there's, as of now, it's still on. But um but there, they are looking into that.
Thank you. Alright, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, just my last thing. I just wanna let you all know that I have completed all the observations um in the classrooms. Over three weeks, I was able to um enter into twenty-one classrooms. It was absolutely remarkable. Um I thank everyone for opening up their doors to me, and um you know, there were some low-hanging fruits that were easy to grab a hold of. And and assist our teachers with, which was fantastic. Um but there's also a lot that that I'd love to share with you, so I'm hoping for that January meeting that I would have the opportunity. To present some of my findings to you um as we prepare for the for the remainder of the year. Um and it was, you know, our our teachers are doing a phenomenal job, as you've heard me say continuously. Um in fact, today, when when the commissioner came out with um. Uh the the time on learning, the live teaching, I had a colleague in another district reach out to me and say. How do we get our younger students, what what are you doing to get our younger students to have that live instruction? And when I shared what we were doing, they said, well, how is that developmentally appropriate? And I actually shared a picture that I can't wait to share with you of a kindergartner. Sharing his work with his friend that was remote, and he's in the classroom, holding up his work, and his friend is going. You did such a great job, and how adorable it was for them to have that collaboration. To be in the, in the, in these situations where I'm observing kids singing songs together, they're, um you know, they're, they're. Answering questions, or they're involved in read-alouds, and the they're, they're, you know, having those those conversations with each other. And it's been, the, it's, it's their normal right now, they're used to this. Um while it isn't the best for every child, and we know that. Um it is a a good model, given the conditions. And so um so I will like to share out my findings um as far as things that are needed, things that are necessary. Um and some of the things that that we, if we can find ways to improve would be great and helpful, so.
Thank you, okay.
We do.
Um, school committee notes, um Caroline, you're first.
There are two questions, just so you know, in the, I don't know if um.
Yep, we'll get to those.
Okay.
Caroline. I, I just wanna sort of formally thank the uh School on Wheels Massachusetts. I know that many people in in our district, but particularly Dr. Cabral have been very involved with that group, but. They provided to um all of us, I mean, people in the community, but also educators. A um, some essentially a seminar called uh impact of trauma and. On learning and behavior in children and teens, and it was really an outstanding presentation. It was by a Dr. Michelle Alto. Um, and I I just wanted to thank them for, I I could. I would, it would be impossible to summarize all of the tremendous um information that was was in this presentation. But of course, it's particularly uh relevant now because so many more children are experiencing trauma because of the pandemic. Um, I did wanna um also just ask a question. I'm a little bit confused about. Um, the travel issue for the Eastern Public Schools. I know that you have it on the website and so on, but there there is a difference between s- students and staff expectations and so on. And one of the concerns I had is about when testing occurs. There seems to be a lot more information out there about the fact that people can be exposed. But the most likely time to test positive af- after exposure, if they don't have symptoms, is somewhere between five and eight days. But certainly not before three days. So in other words, if someone returns and takes the test that day. And could have been exposed during travel, which is a pretty um significant risk. Um, it's kind of meaningless to say, well, then they had a negative test when they got back. They really, I think if they've traveled particularly to one of the higher-risk areas, although it seems as though the entire United States is red right now. But um it it doesn't seem too helpful to have a test like immediately upon return. I'm just, uh, I know that's the sta- the standard for staff, and then. I just wanna clarify, we can't really require that families, like you said, there's an honor system, but we can't require that they. Have their children tested, correct? I mean, because we don't offer the test ourselves.
Right.
But even if we did, we couldn't require people to take the test, is my understanding.
Right, so there is a difference between staff and students. Again, we're talking about the difference between adults and children. Um, we need our adults in person. Um, we, the. I agree with you that it isn't um the most ideal situation, however, the governor's order. Actually allows people to test seventy-two hours before leaving their. Vacation spot or other country or what have you before coming back. So we really can't veer too far from the governor's order. Um as it is, we are, you know, that's the floor and not the ceiling, but we really can't veer too, too far from his order. And we think it makes a lot more sense for a person to test when they come back to Massachusetts. As opposed to seventy-two hours before they leave, even if it means they may need to have some days out of school for that. Um certainly, it takes days even to get the results, so we are suffering from the loss of staff during that time. Um, in terms of the the employee returning to work. You know, we have some very good standards in place, and as long as people are using universal precautions. I think our data shows very strongly that we don't have school spread because we are keeping people far apart from one another. We are disinfecting regularly, people are wearing masks, not engaging in risky behavior and so forth. We can require more of that with adults and employees than we can certainly with children. Um who we don't ness- we don't have authority over, um you know, when they're not in school or how they may behave. Or how their parents may wish for them to behave. Um and so of course, it's going to be different between children uh and adults. But in terms of, you know, making sure, we we urge everyone all the time. We're reminding our staff constantly to use those universal precautions. We do feel as though they're safe, our data is backing that up. And um again, having a test is better than not having a test, and our staff's been so wonderful and cooperative. In making sure that they do get a test before they come back, uh because, you know, technically, we can't, we can't ask them to get one either. Uh but they are complying, they're being wonderful and cooperative, um and no, we can't force a child to get a test. Um we do offer to pay for a staff test, but we can't offer to pay for a stu- student's test. We don't have the funding for that, uh and that is another reason why we we do require the fourteen-day quarantine for students. Because we can't require everyone to take a test. However, with that said, I did know that there was new CDC guidance. Um not yet officially shared by the Department of Education, but it does involve um a shorter. A significantly shorter quarantine if certain conditions are met. Which is why I really don't wanna talk about it tonight, and especially not without that written guidance from Desi, because while I understand it. Um I just, I wouldn't wanna leave anything out. It's not a straight certain number of days, like fourteen-day quarantine, you can come back. It's not like that. If they get tested on a certain date. Any if, if, ifs involved, and many different dates that go with it. So we will be releasing that information as soon as Desi has, you know, formally adopted it and and sent it out. Um and we will be counseling people individually as necessary, but in terms of making that public information, you know, I think people will. Um, will better understand it uh if they see it in writing. But there is going to be some modification to that. So, you know, as we're learning about the disease, we are learning about, you know, our our knowledge about it is evolving. And fourteen-day quarantine even isn't um, isn't considered required anymore. It's actually shorter than that.
Thank you. Um I just have one last question for Chrissy. Um, when you did your observations, did you find that teachers needed to spend. An undue amount of time reminding kids to adjust their masks or to be wearing them correctly? I I know there have been a number of comments, I know that you're not big fans of social media, but. You know, parents reporting that some of the kids in their children's classes just really are not wearing the masks correctly or putting them under their nose, whatever. This seems to be more at the high school level that this is happening. I don't hear about it so much at the elementary level, but I'm just wondering what your observations were in that respect.
At the secondary level, I did not see any of that, even as I was in the hallways. Um I actually had to catch myself once because I was traveling in the wrong direction. Um, and thankfully, I was reminded by the students that I was going in the wrong direction. Um they, they, I did not see that at all. Um and in the primary level, I saw it. A couple times, but that was only because their masks were too big. And the the actual, either the educators in the classroom, whether it be the teacher or the paraprofessional, were actually helping. Um make the mask smaller for the child. That was the only instance. It wasn't out of any other reason but that.
And I've had the same experience. I have not been able to have the scheduled visits like like Mrs. Pruitt had, um. Unfortunately, but um but I've had the same experience. Uh uh the kids have been great. Are are there going to statistically be, you know, anomalies? Yeah, of course, but. Um the the number of students in a room is so small right now, like ten or four. That it's very easy for an educator to have eyes on every single student. And of course, they are personally incentivized to be sure that everyone's wearing their masks properly. Um I have not had one, um, I have not had one, um. Case brought to my attention of just obstinance or chronic issue of someone not wearing a mask, not one.
That's great, that's very reassuring. Thank you.
Okay, Caroline, you're all set. Michelle.
Just two quick comments. Um one is just once more to congratulate uh Wes Paul and wish him. Wonderful things in his retirement, and a shout out to teachers, parents, and all staff administration. I think that, I don't think as a fellow teacher going through this pandemic, that you really. Could possibly be prepared for this past month and then the next month coming up with the surge and the amount of stress and anxiety. That just is everywhere, and so a huge, huge thank you and shout out to all of um teachers, staff. Parents, I don't wanna leave anyone out, cuz everybody, everybody, I know, um. You you just, you don't understand unless you're, you're wearing those shoes right now, and and I I just truly appreciate it, and I hope that. The community does, and I believe they do, but I just wanted to to acknowledge it, cuz this month and next month are just. Incredibly stressful.
Thank you, Michelle. Jackie?
Sorry, um I just a couple of things. So I also attended the um webinar. Um that Caroline had discussed. Um it was very informative. Thank you, Chrissy, for letting us know about it. Um, also, one of the things that kind of stuck out to me that I um, that really was kind of surprising to me. Is the way the um trauma manifests with children in the classroom isn't always immediate. There can be a delayed reaction, um which was really news to me. It didn't, I didn't think of it that way. And I I just thought that was a very interesting, um that was a very interesting point to learn. Um so last week, I had the opportunity to visit Mrs. Cordera's kindergarten classroom for the second time. Um because my son was in her class many years ago. She was great. She had the room all homey and all, you know, kindergartony. Um, even though the setup was different with the, obviously no tables, they were the desks and the books are put away, and there's no little rug to go on. Um but it was still, it was still a kindergarten classroom, you know, she had the buckets next to the desks. For kids to put their stuff in. She had these comfortable little chairs that they could sit on for reading time. They all had pictures of their families on the desks. Um and she, you know, she's a kindergarten teacher, she's singing everything, she has rhymes for everything, the kids are participating. Um, you know, she had kids doing activities in the morning before the in-class kids doing activities before the online kids came in. And then she had the kids in class and online interacting with each other, like choosing each other to answer questions or there was back and forth between them. It was really quite incredible. Um, and although she has a facilitator in the class, the facilitator really acted almost as a learning specialist because the learning specialist is acting as a facilitator somewhere else. So she was managing all this herself, including wiping everything down constantly. Um, the kids were great. They were, when they were waiting in line to wash their hands, they were keeping the distance. They had their masks on. They, it was, it was really, it was really impressive. Um, and it was also, uh, very clear that it's all hands on deck there. Mr. Cedarbaum, she said, would come in and help out as well. Um, she did say she's never had so many kids in need of help and, um, that really kind of struck me. Um, she made it look easy. She made it look fun. She made it fun for the kids. She made it fun for me to be in there again. But I'm sure she's completely wiped out at the end of each day and I, I really appreciate her allowing me to spend some time in her classroom because um, it was nice to see that the, the littlest kids, the kids who hadn't been in school before were still having a fun kindergarten experience, even though it's very different. Um, but she still made it, she made it really fun for the kids. So I wanted to thank her for that. Um, so the last thing I wanted to say was, um, following up on something that, uh, Dr. Caral had said earlier about, um, parents reaching out to the schools if they were concerned about how their kids were doing because we're all having difficulties these days and, um, I just personally have had experience with the, the staff at RO and they have just been phenomenal in helping me. And, um, I would just encourage people to, to reach out if they need assistance because they are there, the administrators are there, the, um, the learning specialists are there, the sped coordinators are there, the psychologists, the adjustment counselors, the teachers, they really go above and beyond to try to help the kids who are in need and the families who are in need. So I just want to encourage you all to reach out if, if you need to. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen?
I'm sure, just want to, uh, talk about a few events in the district that have happened over the past week. Um, the first was the special town meeting, which was a week ago Monday, so it did take a little bit to get a quorum. Um, it was a lot to get a hundred people out in the middle of a nor'easter in a pandemic. Um, but there, there were, um, you know, we were able to pass most of the items on the warrant. Uh, lost the quorum by the end for the final vote, which had to do with some zoning issues that'll come back up again. Um, but there was some encouraging news in terms of um, the state finalizing their budget and the town opting to, um, to take some funds and put them in a short-term, um, account that's managed by the finance committee uh, with the intent that those would be available for emergency purposes for both the town and the school. Especially with some of the COVID relief funding running out on the thirty-first, so, um, very grateful that, that that business was able to get done, um, and that those, you know, those funds are available. Certainly the projections for budgets for the next couple of years are not good, uh, but we're getting through one day at a time here, right? Um, Raising Multicultural Kids had a, a good seminar this week, um, with, uh, regarding, there's a a great movie that's available for free on, I think it's Hulu, uh, about Brian Banks, who was somebody who was, um, uh, wrongly imprisoned and, uh, the California Innocence Project took on the case and the lead attorney from the Innocence Project, uh, was the guest for this seminar. So it was, it was really neat to, uh, hear more about, about their work. So again, thanks to, uh, Raising Multicultural Kids for that excellent partnership and for putting together um, these great seminars and resources, webinars for the community. Um, there was a CPAC meeting last night, so thank you to, uh, Teresa Skinner and her staff for joining that. Um, there were a, a little over a dozen people on the call. It was great to get an update um, on how everything's going, where some of the challenges are, where some of the successes are. And then I do want to encourage anybody who's watching, if, if you have, um, a child with special education needs and you're not connected to the CPAC, they're an amazing resource. Um, easiest place to find them is probably on their Facebook page, uh, start there and there are a lot of um, contact information to get in touch with the CPAC board. They are very interested in helping families navigate the special education system. Case in point, yesterday, um, there was a parent support group, um, after the formal meeting. And, um, a parent joined late and just kind of shared that she'd always wanted to join a meeting, but you know, never worked out because it's in person. So one of the takeaways is that I believe virtual meetings will continue. Um, because they, they are so much more accessible to families. And, um, she shared some issues that's going on with one of her students that she had no idea where to begin to navigate. And the CPAC board as always was a hundred percent on it. The person in your school is this person, reach out to them. Here's your basic rights information. Go out to this website, we're going to send you some materials via email and we're going to follow back up with you tomorrow. And that's the work they do to support families and help them navigate is just really so tremendous and tireless. So I appreciate, um, CPAC folks for all the work that you do. Um, you're really making a difference to families' lives. And then last is, uh, is a bit of sort of normalcy. I know winter sports tryouts start next week. And so I know a lot of, a lot of students, um, are looking forward to having that little bit of their life back in a modified version. So good luck to everybody trying out into the seasons that'll, that'll be beginning any, any week now.
All right, very good. Thank you. Uh, Chrissy, did you have something? No? Okay, nope, we're all set. All right, and, um, I just want to, I agree with Michelle and, and Caroline. Everybody, all your comments are good. Um, so our next scheduled, you know, our next school committee meeting will be January fourteenth of twenty twenty-one and again, we're meeting Monday at six, but then we'll go into our executive session with the town at six thirty. Um, okay, so just want to wish everybody happy Hanukkah. I believe that starts tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. And, uh, happy holidays and be safe, everybody. And, uh, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Wiseman's second.
All those in favor?
O'Neil, yes.
Yes, yes.
Deluca, yes?
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Good night.